All right, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, we'll call this meeting to order at seven o'clock PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Von Crooks, Benedetti.
Here.
Kiowaattan.
Present.
Pate.
Here.
Prueji.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rozepa.
Here.
Quorum present, Mayor Rozepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item we have on the agenda.
May I make a motion to excuse Councilmember Von Crooks?
Support.
Moved and supported. Thank you for that, Councilman. Got ahead of myself there. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Excuse Councilwoman Von Crooks, thank you. Now, first up, we have here a minute approval of the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much. Next up, we have public comment regarding any items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment is reserved exclusively for items on today's agenda. We'll have another opportunity for all other public comment after the fact. We'll go to anyone in person first, then those on the Zoom. If you're on Zoom, want to put the raise hand feature up, we'll go to you there. To ask that anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address. Limit their comment to five minutes and direct all questions through me, so not seeing any hands here. We'll move right on along here. Next up, we have under appointments, asking for this body's approval to move the appointment of Melissa Lawler to the City Beautiful Commission with the term expiring October first, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Benedetti.
Yes.
Kiowaattan.
Yes.
Pate.
Yes.
Prueji.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rozepa.
Abstained.
Motion carries, Mayor Rozepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you all. Next, we have here from our Downtown Development Authority, our art festival with murals. And I know we have our chairman, Mark Angelotti, and our DDA member, Emily Hornbeck, here in attendance too. But if we could get a motion first, then I think Emily might be given an update for us here. So moved and supported. Any further discussion? Actually, I'm sorry, we'll go to say Emily, if you wanted to go up to the podium now, then it'd be great.
Good evening. For those who don't know, I'm Emily Hornbeck. I'm the Vice Chair of the Downtown Development Authority. And we are bringing to you today a mural festival that we would like to bring to downtown Trenton next summer, end of summer, early fall. I know there is a PowerPoint presentation. I don't know, are you guys?
Oh, yep.
Okay, while we're getting that up, just update you on some projects in the last year. So I don't know if the DDA has presented anything to the council lately, but we've been very busy working. We sponsored the seasonal flowers downtown along with the City Beautiful. And we purchased the gator and had a part-time employee making sure that our flowers are always looking beautiful and keeping the downtown looking great. We're in the process of funding the municipal parking lot redesign and rebuild, as well as Rotary Park. I know that's a big project coming up in the downtown district. The new handicap plates that just went in on all the corners downtown was sponsored by the DDA, as well as our summer festival. We were a sponsor, Christmas parade, sip and strolls, all that stuff. And right now, we're currently engaged in a branding for the city. We have a local company from Lansing that's working to help us give a unified brand to all the departments in the city. And we're also working on a historical designation for our downtown. So those are all the projects that we've been working on, I think, since anyone's been here to update you last. And now we're talking about the Trenton Art Festival. So this is, like I said, it's a project that will be about a year from right now, maybe sometime, hopefully in September, we're working towards it. You could actually go ahead to like the fourth slide, the community engagement and collaboration. So what the mural festival is basically is there are two people that will be paying to help put this on. One of will be the art director and one will be the actual festival director. And they want to engage and activate everyone downtown, whether or not one of their buildings is chosen for a mural. But we want to get every single business in downtown engaged and a part of the process. In over two weeks, we'll have world-renowned artists come to downtown Trenton, hopefully local artists as well, to put together seven murals and three sculpture projects, one of which we are really excited to have at City Hall. So I know that'll be a nice signature piece for the City Hall. And it will be getting people engaged in the downtown. So not hopefully, it will. It will bring a lot of business down just for that first two-week period where we're having all the art installed, because they're going to be really interactive and the artists want people to come down and engage with them and take part. There's going to be a scavenger hunt for kids. There's going to be actually an art show during the festival so people can see all the different art that these artists have done already, because they have done mural festivals all over the world. So this isn't just like a small festival. We're hoping to get, you know, thousands of people to come on and engage. If you want to go to the next slide, it's a really cool example of what one of our murals, this isn't the style of mural we'll have, but just the way it looks on the side of a building. Our consultant has already found, we have seven murals slated, but she said there's at least a dozen ideas of where she could put them. So she's going to engage each business owner individually to make sure that they're willing and able to have a mural on the side of their building. Obviously, no one's going to be forced. And, you know, we're really hoping that people want to volunteer. She's spoken to quite a few businesses already, and they're really eager to participate. So if you go to the next slide, so the ultimate goal here is to get this public art into our downtown and eventually bring it into the whole community. So this is just phase one. And ideally, we could have an annual festival, maybe at a smaller scale than the initial, but that would bring art up the West Road corridor and into even the pocket parks by phase three. Just getting the art in the whole city and also engaging the community along the way and having them be a part of it so that, you know, it's everybody's art festival. So they're going to have a sip and stroll, children's activity, a scavenger hunt, an original art show. And like I said, all the businesses will be invited to engage and host something, hopefully, so that the community can kind of stroll through all of the downtown businesses, not just the ones that are going to have the murals on them. And the next slide is another example of, you know, building mural. And the following slide, the yellow one, is the planning process. So our consultant's already spoken to quite a few business owners who are excited, but she's going to go, if approved, will go down and speak to every business owner downtown to make sure that they're all engaged. And if they want to participate, that we're going to find a way to make sure everybody can participate. So once the locations are secured and approved, they're going to match the artists to the businesses. And everyone is going to be tailored to something local, like it's going to be tied to either their business or some piece of Trenton history. So each one will be like specifically curated for that business. And obviously, we will have say over all the art. They're not just going to throw up whatever they want. It will definitely be like, you know, a community collaboration, and everyone will have a say before anything's finalized. This is probably the part that I think is the most bang for the buck. On the next slide is the branding and social media. Yep. They're going to provide all the branding material, including the logo posters, flyers, banners, marketing, a map of downtown with all the events on it. So they will be providing all of that for us. So we'll be able to market this well beyond the festival. So even, you know, in the future, we'll have the rights to be able to do all that. And they'll also be curating our social media content, which collectively between the two consultants, they have over one hundred and fifty thousand followers. And they're very loyal followers. They will come to the art. That's pretty much a guarantee. So they're going to have photos, videos, drone footage, all the different press releases and social media posts that you can hope for. They're going to bring it all here in Trenton for us. And the next one is an example of their murals in the market. If you've ever been to Eastern Market and seen their murals, these consultants have been working there for the last ten years and have been a big part of murals in the market and Eastern Market. So they have a lot of experience putting these together. And this is kind of an example of what it will look like, you know, for ours. And it'll be twenty twenty-four. And the next page is just some samples of what their merchandise looked like. Obviously, ours will look different, but it'll be, you know, we'll be able to have all of these different things with our name on it. And the next one is actually, I think there was this Jesse Castle, the Grozeal map. This is something that the consultant just worked with the artist to get this for Grozeal. She's just been engaged with the Grozeal DDA for the last, I think, year, year and a half. And this is one of the murals that they worked on. If you saw it up close, it's amazing. Also, there's the mural on the side of the hardware store. That's the giant Mustang. And there was one more that they just finished. They were featured in Smithsonian Magazine, just their Eastern Market mural. So that was just a quote from Smithsonian Magazine. And then another example of murals is on the next slide. So the art themes, they really want to make sure that everything relates to Trenton and what makes Trenton unique. So they want to pull in trail town and bike paths, the nature reserve, outdoor activities, the restaurants, the people, the businesses. Her goal is to make sure that every resident and visitor will fall in love and relate to the murals. So they're going to be unique just for our city. And then there is a mock-up that she did for, it's on the side of the Framery, right there. That's just, so she had already spoke with Shelby from the Framery. And she scouted out two good walls and then just did this mock-up for us, just to show what a little one might look like. And then the next one is an example, I think that's on the side of, that's on the side of Promenade. Yeah, that's just another example of what they are thinking about for the bigger murals, to have it consume the whole wall. And then she did scout some potential locations, but I walked the downtown and so did she. There are plenty of spaces where we can have this. Those are just a couple of the walls, but there certainly are a lot more. There's another page of samples, too. And then this, oh yeah, behind the custard corner, that is the next page. Yeah, that's, that would be like the big one, something like that, like that spans like two walls. Here comes your favorite part. Yes, the budget. So the DDA approved up to two hundred thousand dollars for the project, which would include the seven murals, the three sculptures, the protective coating, which will help make them last at least ten years, and also all the social media, the year of marketing, and the two consultants. So we did approve up to two hundred thousand dollars, but we've been working with the consultant on bringing that cost down. It is, I understand it's a big expense, but based on all the infrastructure projects that we've done over the last year, the DDA was really excited to be able to do something that would show, you know, a vibrant, colorful, engaged downtown. So that's why we think it's worth it. The public art can have such a big impact on cities. I've seen what it did at Eastern Market. Even the small angel wings they have on the side of All About Grace, people drive from all over to take pictures with that. They love it, and that brings people into our downtown. So it's, you know, it's really good to, we're trying to build up our downtown as much as possible. And I think this would be an incredible way to show people that we're serious about getting more people to come to our city and shop downtown and dine and spend time with their families. And I think on the last page is just the picture of the festival director and the creative director. Those are contact information. If you have any additional questions, they'd be more than happy to help.
Thank you very much, Emily. Does anyone who will open up for discussion, question, comments now? Councilwoman Prueji.
I have a list.
Sure.
It's not as long as Wendy's, but it is a list.
I know all the answers.
Well, I know what you do. You always say you do.
I was surprised with that, wasn't he, right?
So these are just ideas or thoughts that I want to make sure is on the record, and I'm not looking for answers today. But how was the number of murals decided? How were the sizes determined? How will the placement of the murals be decided? Because you could have more interest than you do have murals. Have the buildings been selected for murals? And I think we've kind of answered that. You've had ideas, but nothing's been selected. And when, and is there a process to selection of those buildings? Because you might have four people interested in two large murals, and you have four businesses, and two of them are going to be ticked off. So I'm just curious how that's going to happen.
I'm actually glad you asked that, because that is a phase two. So if we have more interest than we have, you know, artists to work, there's a couple of different things. We can always find, if there's any that much interest, the business is welcome to pay additional money beyond what we approve here to have, we could get more artists. Or we can look at phase two, which would be next year, or a year from the original mural festival, and bringing more artists in and doing more walls.
But I'm just saying initially, if you had four people interested, two are going to be not happy. And how is it you're going to select those two? What's going to be the process? I don't have that answer now, obviously, but that is a concern. What, by chance, I doubt this is going to happen, but what if there are less buildings than what is quoted for the murals? So let's say we only have three people wanting murals, but yet we've approved for a hundred and eighty. Are we on the hook for a hundred and eighty or two hundred? Or are they going to reduce that price based on what murals we put on the walls? That's another rhetorical concern that I have.
There'll be a contract that will address that.
Yeah, and I'm sure Dean will take care of that. And last but not least, I just want to make sure a particular elected body has say over what's going on in the murals. That is a concern of mine, that we have, you know, somebody who approves those at an elected level.
Well, may I?
Yeah, yeah, please.
So, yes, I mean, because there are actually, everyone is sensitive to the do's and the don'ts and some personal tastes and everything else. I would prefer to bring at least the conceptual ideas back to council and to the DDA for a final approval. I mean, it's not going to be exactly precisely because you're dealing with artists, whatever. But yes, I would intend on bringing the approved contracts, everything hammered out in the details, even the selection process, if there needs to be a selection process, back, and you guys would have a final review.
Okay. Well, I think this is a great concept. I really do. I just think it's awesome. And I appreciate the work the DDA has done. I just want to make sure we dot the dot, the i's and cross the t's, and don't expose ourselves to something that might not be what we intended. So that's my concerns, and I'm done. So thank you.
Sure. Cool. Thank you very much, Councilman. Those are certainly all very good points. So any further discussion?
No, he asked them all.
Would you say it?
He asked them all.
Oh, okay. Yep, no, absolutely. Cool. Seeing no further discussions, unanimously so ordered. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have our Thirty-third District Court fines, costs, and fees for August twenty twenty-three with Councilwoman Von Crooks absent. I'll defer to our alternate delegate, Councilwoman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved, received, and placed on file the fines, costs, fees for August twenty twenty-three submitted by the Thirty-third District Court showing the City of Trent owing one hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-two cents.
Support. Moved and supported. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think we need to thank Chief Hawkins or whoever had a hand in this, because I can say in six years, that's been the lowest one.
It's the lowest in a long time, at very least. So absolutely. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilman. Next up, we have two items under general here. Madam Clerk, if you don't mind taking this first from Boxford Drive Residence, block party request.
Sure. The Blackford, I'm sorry, Boxford Drive residents are asking for permission to hold a block party on Saturday, October twenty-eighth. This would be from nine AM till midnight, and approve the road blockages of Boxford Street between Strom and Truwood under the direction of the Police Department and the Department of Public Services.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you all. Next, we have from River Q Pastry Pantry, trunk or treat.
River Q Pastry Pantry is asking for permission to hold a trunk or treat on Saturday, October fifteenth, from five PM to seven PM. This would be on the sidewalk in front of the businesses near the pastry shop. It would go from Jet's Pizza to Scoopy's Ice Cream, and this would also be under the direction of the Police Department.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Prueji.
I understand that the police have approved it, but did the businesses approve it, like in front of Jets, in front of the ice cream shop?
All the businesses are planning on participating in it. I believe all of them are participating.
And just, I think, is one slight thing here. It says, I think, Saturday on here, but it would be, it's Sunday, the fifteenth, correct? Because I think it would, yeah, in the application, it says ten fifteen. So it should, I think it's Sunday, and that's, they were coinciding it with the other trunk or treat.
Yep, it would be with the other one.
Okay. So I think, yeah, it'll be Sunday, the fifteenth.
Oh, she has Sunday, the fifteenth.
Yeah, okay, so that's right. Yep, Sunday, the fifteenth.
Okay.
Cool.
Thank you for catching that.
All right. Did I miss it? Do we have a motion and support there?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. All right, thank you all. Next, we have from our city administrator, two items here, the first being ordinance number eight seventeen, repeal chapter twenty-two, section twenty-two, distance between stations.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you have ordinance number eight one six, an ordinance for the City of Trenton to repeal chapter twenty-two, section twenty-two point or dash eight four, distance between stations. This is the second reading with the plan enacted upon of today, October ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and an effective date of October sixteenth of two thousand twenty-three. Otherwise, the reading is exactly the same as four weeks ago. And if you want to not have me read the whole thing.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion?
Maybe my ears wrong. Dean, did you say eight one six or eight one seven? It says here, I thought you'd said eight one six, but maybe I was wrong.
Eight one six.
This says eight one seven.
Okay, the agenda says eight one seven.
Okay, the ordinance itself, you have to look back at the previous one. The one I'm holding in my hand says eight one six.
Just want to make sure we're clear for the record.
Yeah.
This is eight one seven.
So this was a misprint. So I stand corrected. It's eight one seven.
Okay. Well, so, yep, no, it is correct there. So any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you all. Next one also from Dean here, we have the ADA Downtown Ramps payment.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Before you, you have the ADA Downtown Ramps. That project is completed, came out really, really good, but this is back before you because there were some small cost overruns.
But this is back before you because there were some small cost overruns uh, that weren't, uh, planned as part of the project, but to do it correctly. Um, and, uh, something that'll last into the long term. So the, uh, I'd like to, like to have the council approve and pay the attached invoice amount of $285,219.92 to Century Cement Company with immediate effect.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, get you next here for your early voting plan beginning in 2024.
Great. Thank you. In November of 2022, the voters of Michigan passed a constitutional amendment proposal two that, among other things, provides the right for early voting before each statewide, federal, and also permits communities to provide early voting for local elections. The city council is required to approve an early voting site and submit an early voting plan to the county no later than October 30th for the presidential 2024 election cycle. So I am requesting your body to approve the early voting site and plan for the City of Trenton beginning in 2024, set designating Trenton City Hall as our early voting site for all precincts during the hours of 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And this would be nine days before each statewide, federal, and local election.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
All right, we have, uh, from our DPS Director, Mr. Sargent, three items. First up here, request authorization to pay emergency sewer repair invoices.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I am seeking authorization to pay the attached emergency sewer repair invoices from Compo Brothers in the total amount of $35,912 and the SAC Company in the amount of $7,475. Funds are available in the Sewer Contractual Services account.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Kevin. Uh, next up, we have the request to purchase two Ford F-250 pickup trucks with plows.
The sanitation and motor vehicle pool and facility supervisor trucks are in need of replacement as they are both 15 years old and becoming unreliable. A quote was received from Gornell Ford for the two 2024 F-250s with complete plow packages. These trucks would match the rest of our fleet and are competitively bid through my deal. These new trucks would be driven daily by supervisors, but they would become part of the fleet during snow events. Funds were budgeted for this purchase. Therefore, I'm seeking authorization to purchase two 2024 F-250s with plow packages from Gornell Ford in the total amount of $128,600.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion, Councilman Cavallone?
Kevin, are these single cabs or crew cabs?
Crew.
They are crews? Okay.
All right, seeing none further, it's unanimously so ordered. And then last up, a request for the City of Trenton to join the Alliance of Downriver Watersheds.
The Alliance of Downriver Watersheds is made up of 21 member communities that work together to meet the requirements of our MS4 permit and to improve water quality. Trenton is the only community downriver that is not an active member of the ADW. Our membership would include many benefits such as illicit discharge investigations, public education and participation efforts, stream monitoring and sampling, and a collaborative approach to stormwater management. Dues are determined by land area and population within the watershed. Trenton's portion of the watershed results in an annual dues of $17,254.70. Spending budget and total dues assessment are approved by the membership on an annual basis. Therefore, I'm seeking approval for the City of Trenton to join the ADW and authorize the mayor to sign the attached resolution on behalf of the city. Funds are budgeted in our stormwater regulations account.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, next we have, uh, from our Human Resources Director, Ms. Perry, the actuarial analysis of benefit changes to the City of Trenton Fire and Police Retirement System.
Thank you and good evening. Before you are the three cost studies used to estimate the impact of the pension changes for the Fire and Police Retirement System. These changes were included and approved in the collective bargaining agreements for both police unions as well as the fire union, and they will be effective July 1st of 2024. These documents need to be formally received by the city council before any of these changes are implemented.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
All right, next up from our Library Director, Ms. Jensen, we have a service contract for staff and public computers, network licenses, et cetera.
Hi, I'm here, uh, before you today to, um, ask for permission to authorize the acceptance of the annual services license agreements between the library and network and the Trenton Veterans Memorial Library in the amount of $5,933.20.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Ms. Jensen.
Thank you.
All right, and from our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Beaker, a request to prepare and advertise the RFP for compressor and chiller systems at the Kennedy Recreation Center.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm requesting your approval to prepare specifications and advertise a request for proposals for replacement of the compressors and chiller system at the Kennedy Recreation Center. Below, you can see our timeline. Um, the inten- the intention is to move quickly, uh, and looking for you to concur.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion, Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I just have a quick question about the survey, not the, so I know it closed the other day for our master plan. Did we get a lot of, uh, input?
We did have quite a bit of input. I have not been able to go through it yet, but.
Okay. Looking forward to hearing about it.
Most definitely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, I think we have one late item this evening. Uh, I'll kick it over to you, Dean, for a crosswalk installation at Valley and Van Horn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you, you have an estimate and some drawings, um, related to the Valley and Van Horn intersection. We had some residents complain about, very justifiably, uh, recently. Our, uh, and our city engineer was able to get with the county and our DPS Director to see about getting, uh, um, that reinstalled to allow people to cross the street as safely as possible. Um, previously also, it didn't continue on the north side of Van Horn. This project will actually, uh, and it's being supported by, um, Wayne County. Um, but this will allow a crosswalk to go from the south side and continue on to the north side so that the kids, especially that walk to school, will have safer, um, passage there. So I'm asking, uh, council to move to approve Century Cement Company as a contract for installation of a new crosswalk at Valley and Van Horn in the amount of $5,970.38 with immediate effect and waive the normal bidding process in the interest of the city.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? I just wanted to say thanks again to you, Dean, uh, Sahil and Kevin specifically for getting this squared away so quick. I think it far exceeded, uh, everyone's expectations on how quickly that was able to move. And, uh, I hope the residents that reached out on Van Horn and Valley each are, uh, pretty pleased, so. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Uh, did we have any other late items, Madam Clerk?
No, we do not.
All right, so we'll kick it over to our Mayor Pro Tem, Councilwoman Pate, uh, for dispersments and statements and reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to approve the authorized dispersments of October 9th, 2023 in the amount of $2,892,911.29.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you. I'd like to move to approve the City Beautiful Commission minutes of August, uh, 2nd, 2023, and September 13th of 2023. The Civic Commission minutes of September 5th, 2023. The Downtown Development Authority minutes of July 13th, 2023, and August 10th, 2023. The Library Governing Board minutes of June 28th, 2023. And the Traffic Safety Commission minutes of June 7th, 2023, and September 6th of 2023.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Uh, all right, we'll go to other council business now. Just a couple of quick things from me. Um, I just want to thank everyone, um, you know, between city staff, volunteers, uh, commission members, all the business owners, and frankly, even the people that showed up, um, who came out over the past week and a half or so between the Lobster Fest downtown and the Halloween Walk this pack, past weekend, um, the pumpkin carving event the Civic Commission put on. Um, got lots of good feedback, uh, really from all of those two. So I hope people were able to enjoy themselves. Um, keep an eye out for more things like this to come. Um, and related to that too, do want to give a plug, um, for folks that might be interested in getting involved with any of these commissions, boards, et cetera. Um, we are always looking for people, um, even if, uh, the spots may currently be full. Um, do keep a stack of applications as much as we can possibly get. Um, but you can check those out on the city website, um, under Boards and Commissions there just to see what they're all about. Um, there's an online application that I promise you, um, is extremely, extremely short to fill out. So, um, if anyone's interested in getting involved or has any questions, feel free to contact my office as well. Um, I do not have anything else right now, so we'll start with the rest of council. And, uh, Councilman Peruzzi, you're first up tonight.
Well, thank you. Um, I just want to say that as driving through town, there's a lot more festive, uh, streets. Uh, there's a Ghost Lane now. There's another street that's got spider webs going from the street or from the sidewalk to the house. So it's really enthusiastic to see the residents getting involved in the seasonal, um, activities. So outside of that, I have nothing, Mayor.
Cool. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cavallone.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Um, just, you know, I want to thank, uh, Parks and Rec team, Tim Beaker and company over there for all the programming that they've been doing. Um, we had an opportunity to attend the Halloween Walk over the weekend. Um, and that's done in conjunction with DIEPAK. That was a really fun, the kids really enjoyed that, had a good time. Um, so, Tim, thank you for everything you do over there. Um, the pumpkin event through the Civic Commission and of course, you know, the Cultural Center there. Um, always looks good, always a good time. Uh, Connor just loved it. Um, and, um, you know, really to thank all the city employees for, you know, it takes a, it, it takes a team of people behind the scenes to make all these events happen. Whether it's the parades for the high school and, uh, their homecoming and police and fire were there making sure people were safe. Um, Deputy Chief was out there, saw him directing traffic. So, uh, good to see him out on the streets, but, uh, you know, it takes a, it takes a, a whole army of people to make that happen. Uh, my sincere appreciation to everybody. Um, also, just, um, October is, uh, Breast Care or Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so, um, you know, my thoughts go out to those that are, uh, fighting, you know, breast cancer and, um, in all forms of cancer at this time. So other than that, that's all I have to, to add tonight, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Well, I have a list, but it's not as long as Nelson's.
Which means it's not as long as Wendy's.
So, um, just a few weeks ago at our last meeting, I forgot to thank the DDA for the wonderful preservation walk. I had such a wonderful time with them and Jessica Flores from the Preservation Forward. It was really great to walk downtown, and then we were also able to see all the wonderful work that they were working on in regards to the sidewalks and the curbs. So that was really great. I had actually sent Dean a text while we were walking around. So I was really happy to see that because we all know I'm really big on breaking down barriers for persons with disabilities. Um, and also too, this weekend, my grandchildren and I and Rob were able to go to the Pumpkin Fest over at the Trenton Cultural Center. We had such a wonderful time. Uh, they got face paints and, uh, so that was fun to see everyone. It was packed, but it was such a wonderful event. And thank you so much, the Civic Commission, for putting that on. It was so much fun. Um, and then we also went to Pumpkin Lane later on in the evening. We had to wait until it was dark so they could see all the lights, and we drove down Ghost Lane. So that was fun, too. Um, and thank you to everyone who worked really hard on the Lobster Fest. I heard it was so much fun. I had some friends that came over from, uh, here on township, and I saw their pictures and everything. They had such a wonderful time. And also too, um, this past week, I spent Tuesday and Wednesday up in Lansing in regards to the auto no-fault reform. So there were a few bills that dropped in the legislation, and right now they are going through the hearings. They had their first hearing last week, and that is Senate Bill 530 and Senate Bill 531 that'll help fix the fix in regards to catastrophic survivors and accidents. Um, I'm not sure if anyone follows what happened in the Supreme Court. They actually overruled and overturned a few of the issues, um, that were actually causing people like my father to have really great care because what they did was end up creating a whole new care system. And unfortunately, a few people had passed away. Um, they also overturned another section of the auto no-fault reform and within the last two months. So now anyone who had a catastrophic accident before June of 2019 is back under the old care of the MCCA. But we also now have a two-tier system for anyone who's had a catastrophic accident after the June 2019. So we have to fix those. Um, so that's a real big passion for my, for me and my family and 18,000 across the state. Um, so please, um, call your senators, your state rop, and ask about those two bills. Um, I'm just asking that you just ask some questions and educate yourself on those. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilman Benedetti.
Man, how do you follow these three? Um, well, I do have one, yeah. I do have one that they didn't touch on. I'd like to thank, uh, you know, I came from there, but still I had to use, uh, the fire department twice over the last two weeks. And they were amazing, came in, took care of everything. Actually, uh, let my wife try talking me into taking him out of the hospital the second time. So I give him credit for that. But I want to appreciate, you know, appreciate their help and coming out and helping me with that. It's funny, you know, when you did it, you never thought about it. Now, when you need him, you're really thankful for it. So appreciate that if you can pass that on to Keith and his guys. Uh, besides that, I have nothing else, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilman. Hope everything's all good. Uh, Councilwoman Pate?
Well, I just want to say I'm glad I've inspired all of you to have such long lists now at our council meetings, but mine will be somewhat short. And I think just the work that, you know, you've seen done on this agenda, the work that you've seen done by all the departments and all the commissions and all the businesses is a real testament to, um, you know, what a great city this is and what it, uh, what potential that it still has if everyone is willing to get involved and help. Um, otherwise, I just want to say thank you to the DDA for, um, following another one of my dreams and, uh, finishing, uh, we, we do have the train, uh, bridge murals that are a trail town welcome into town. And I think, um, splashing the rest of the city with, uh, more art and sculpture and place making, um, will, will change, you know, Trenton. And, and again, it's all about who continues to champion that and, uh, what we can do with it. But you have to start somewhere, and you have to fight for new things and, uh, try new things. And, um, I'm really happy about that. But I also want to say that the, um, murals also connect to something that we're working on, or I have been working on, um, with the Jefferson Corridor group of communities. Um, you know, this was actually started on Grozeal. It's just a matter of being in certain places and talking with people and networking with them. And you just, you start talking with people and amazing things will happen. So, you know, that's what happened. And now, you know, I'm still talking with the rest of the communities. We're looking at, uh, Wind Dot being next, so we are, we are ahead of them now. And, uh, they'll get this the following year, and we're hoping that River Rouge, Ecourse River View will also get on board, and we can have a corridor project where, uh, we have tours and all kinds of activities that are tied to these, um, murals that are done by artists that have a following all over the world. So it's really incredible, but again, it'll just be art on a wall if, if that's all we do with it. So keep working hard. Um, everybody who's done something for the city in the last month, you know, just keep it going and appreciate you, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Uh, we'll go to our other elected officials now. Uh, Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us?
I'll just mention that our next council meeting will be next Monday, October 16th at 7:00 PM.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Madam Assessor, do you have anything for us tonight?
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Treasurer, do we have, like, here? Okay. Nothing? Thank you, Amanda. All right, nothing in the Treasurer's office. We'll go to our department heads. Do any of our department heads have anything? And Mr. Beaker from Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you guys had stated, uh, we had a wonderful Halloween Walk this past weekend. Uh, wanted to send out proper thank yous to the, uh, Trenton Rotary Interact Club. All the students came over to help on Friday and Saturday night. They did a phenomenal job, um, along with our city assessor. Uh, she was over there leading the crew and, and running around with us as well. So thank you to all of them. DPS did a phenomenal job, um, getting us set up and taken down, as well as over at the Cultural Center. So a special thank you to them as well. And DIEPAK put on a wonderful performance once again, so we can't do without them. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Tim. Appreciate it. Uh, any other department heads up down at the library?
Um, just wanted to let everyone, uh, remind everyone actually that this weekend is the used book sale at the library, and, um, all of those proceeds go to help make your library an even better place, uh, to serve you. So Saturday, um, is the sale, and then on Monday, uh, there'll be a $5 bag sale. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other department heads got anything? Seeing none? All right, we'll go to public.